Councillor Zhou, could we do a sound check, please?
Hi Tina, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. It's better when you're closer to your computer, please.
Perfect. Also, is my X panel working? So I just put myself there.
It'll be all good. Yep.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right. Councillor Claussen? Sound test?
Sound check, sound check.
You might need to get a little closer when you're speaking, but it sounds good. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So who do we have? No Sim.
Hi Tina, Rebecca.
Oh, hi. Sorry.
Hi.
I didn't see you. So for quorum, we will need your video on.
I'm aware.
Okay.
No problem.
Yeah, I know what you are. Okay. But you sound good. Thank you.
Good evening. I will now call the reconvening public hearing of October 19th, 2023 to order. This meeting is convened by electronic means. As such, council members may participate in person or by electronic means. For council members participating by electronic means, please ensure your video is turned on and let the clerk know if you leave the meeting for the purposes of confirming quorum. Council members are reminded that in accordance with section 14.13 of the procedure bylaw, members must enable their video to confirm quorum. Councillors, if you could just have your videos on just so that we can confirm and maintain quorum. Fantastic. Thank you, everyone. If council members attending by electronic means lose connection during any portion of the hearing, we will recess the meeting until the connection is restored. If council members lose connection during the voting process, staff will get you back online quickly while we suspend the voting process. The contact information has been circulated to each of you. Members of the public can view the proceedings via the live stream and YouTube link, which will be tweeted out by at Van City Clerk. We acknowledge that we are on the unceded homelands of the Musqueam, Squamish, and Slavettooth peoples. We thank them for having cared for this land and look forward to working with them in partnership as we continue to build this great city together. In case of an emergency where we need to evacuate the building, I would like to direct your attention to the exits. There are two exits beyond the glass doors and to the left. If these exits are obstructed, please direct your attention to the four exits in this chamber. Please use the stairs, do not use the elevator. I'd also like to highlight that there's a defibrillator located at the end of the hallway outside of the council chamber. I want to take a moment to recognize the immense contributions of the City of Vancouver staff who work hard every day to help make our city an incredible place to live, work, and play. I also want to take a moment. I also want to note the City of Vancouver's longstanding commitment to equity, diversity, and inclusion, including utmost respect for all genders. I remind council that when addressing speakers and staff, we will avoid using gendered honorifics and will instead refer to the person by first and last name, role, or title. Clerks, may we have a roll call?
Yes, Mayor, excuse me, Mayor Sim is on a leave of absence for civic business all day today. Councillor Carr also on leave of absence for civic business all day today. Councillor Kirby Young. Councillor Dominado is the acting mayor and in the chair, Councillor Bly.
Present.
Councillor Boyle.
Present.
Councillor Frye has a leave of absence today for civic business all day. Councillor Montague is not present. Councillor Claussen.
Present.
And Councillor Meisner. And Councillor Zhou.
Present.
The hearing has quorum.
Chair. Thank you, clerks. A reminder that council's role at a public hearing is to be a quasi judicial body, which means council is to only consider the merits of the rezoning application or heritage designation. Council may approve the application in principle, may refuse the application, or refer the application to staff for further consideration. At the public hearing on October 17th, 2023, council completed items one through five. And for item six, council received a presentation from staff, asked questions of staff and the applicant, and heard from public speakers. Both the speaker's list and receipt of public comments were closed at that time. Council will now proceed with staff and applicant closing comments, followed by debate and decision for item six, rezoning 6081, 6083, Collingwood Place, as it was recessed from the last meeting. So for item 6081, 6083, Collingwood Place, I'll ask if the applicant has any closing comments.
Yes.
You may go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Sims, Mayor Sim and council members. We, as the applicant team, have listened to the speaker voicing their concerns and suggestions during the meeting prior to the recess. In the detailed design phase, we will consider these into our design. For example, we could accept the decision on the driveway access either from Dunbar Street or Collingwood Place. First of all, Dunbar Street is not a busy street, especially on sections between Marine Drive and 41st Avenue. There are no parking restrictions on either side of the streets, and parking is free for all day long. Secondly, many, many buildings in downtown area already have vehicle entrances and exits on the street a lot busier than Dunbar. So it is not unprecedented for vehicles to enter and exit in such conditions. In addition, we will reserve pedestrian entrances and exits on Dunbar Street and improve the pedestrian path along the north side of the building as to minimize the use of Collingwood Place internal blocks by building tenants. We would work closely with the city staff and other consultants, including traffic consultants, to resolve the technical issues. All in all, we hope you will approve this development because we're contributing our effort to help solve the housing crisis in Vancouver by providing 20 to 30 rental units for families and/or student groups looking to call Vancouver home. Let them live with dignity, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for those closing comments. Do we have any closing comments from staff?
Staff would like to remind council of the two yellow memos attached to this report and that all approvals in principle tonight will be in accordance with the yellow memo. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll see if council have any further questions for staff. You can't ask questions of the applicant now, but you can ask further questions of staff. I see no one on the queue. And so as you've heard, to move the recommendation, you will also have to move the two yellow memos. So do I have a mover? Moved. Councillor Meisner, seconder?
Second.
Councillor Boyle.
Second. Councillor Zhou. Now we're moving into debate and discussion. Councillor Kirby Young, I see you on the queue.
Yeah, thanks, Chair Dominado. We had a really good discussion here, and I think that a lot of people are familiar with this. And in response to some of the feedback we were seeing, it looked tough and saw that indeed this is a very unique cul-de-sac here. And what we're trying to do is balance the delivery of new housing, but in a way that obviously is done in supporting the neighborhoods and with safety. I was heartened after that discussion because I recall asking a question of our former director of planning at the time of referral, if the access, vehicular access, would be off of Dunbar. And the answer, I believe, was yes on the record. And now we heard a little bit differently throughout this process here. I think given there was a fire on the street, it's narrow. I do think the city can take a number of other steps, whether they require parking on one side of the street, improve sidewalks, other things that they can do here. But with respects to what is in front of council tonight for considering this specific report, and I was heartened to hear from the applicant that they would be very happy to accept conditions off of Dunbar, and they would have pedestrian access off of Dunbar, and they were willing to improve sidewalk, that it makes sense to provide that explicit expectation from council. And so I sent in an amendment. I don't know if you want to move us to an amendment queue? Thank you very much for that. And it simply, I think, encapsulates the conversation that what we heard from speakers, the questions that council was asking, what we just heard from the applicant themselves. And it says that council add as a new condition of approval of the development application 1.18 that staff require allowing vehicular access to the building off Dunbar Street due to the unique site considerations, as opposed to the common practice of having vehicular access off quieter streets, recognizing Collingwood Place's unique cul-de-sac configuration with adequate safety mitigation measures to be delivered by the applicant. And I think that that's self-explanatory based on what we've heard, so I will leave it there.
Thanks.
Thank you, Councillor Kirby Young. I'll advance Councillor Meisner for comments on the amendment. Oh, sorry. Yes, I do need a seconder. Second, Councillor Meisner. Thank you. We'll move to discussion.
Thanks very much, Chair Dominado. Yes, in full agreement with this amendment, given the concerns raised by many of the speakers around the access piece. This is a unique site. When SRP was envisioned, many of the examples provided were sites that backed onto laneways, and this is a cul-de-sac, so I think it does necessitate a different approach. And I personally can see the challenges that would result in the access being from a cul-de-sac, especially such a long cul-de-sac as this, that also doesn't have any sidewalks. So this is, in my opinion, a unique situation, but also recognizing that we need to do what we can to move rental housing forward, and this is a rental housing project. So I think this strikes a balance, addressing the neighbors' concerns around the parcade access potentially being off the cul-de-sac by moving that to Dunbar Street and allowing an important rental project to proceed. Thanks.
Thank you, Councillor Meisner. Councillor Boyle.
Thanks so much. I'll just be brief in saying my preference always is that, as we are traffic engineers, that amendments of public hearing like this give direction to staff to do that study, to weigh out the safety risks and benefits. We know all of these types of decisions have pros and cons, have risks and benefits. So I would have much preferred if this language was direction to do that study and then proceed with the best option. But I can also live with this. One thing that really stood out to me in hearing from speakers on this issue is how often the main concern really was cars, not housing. And I hear that in neighborhoods all over the city. It's one of the important reasons, for those safety reasons as well as for climate reasons, that so much of our traffic planning, housing planning, climate plans look at reducing dependence on personal vehicle use for every trip. And actually, it's one of the compelling reasons we need to be building a lot more housing just like this in neighborhoods like this, where you're walking distance to the bus, where students can get easily to school. So I hear those traffic concerns. I certainly don't think there are reason not to build housing, but can live with this amendment in support that we badly need and also a bit more about the housing when we're back on the main queue.
Thank you, Councillor Boyle. Councillor Claussen.
Thank you, Chair. And I think sort of just pivoting a little bit off of what Councillor Boyle just said right now.
Councillor Claussen, I'm just going to interrupt you for one moment. Can you just speak up a bit? We can't hear you very well in chambers.
Uh, let me maybe, let me try and... Is this better? Can you hear me okay?
Much better. Thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot. So now, again, just sort of pivoting a little bit off of what Councillor Boyle said about, you know, cars in our, in our, these, in neighborhoods like this one, that understanding and mitigating the various needs, the pedestrian access, the ability to get back and forth with vehicles. So we know that there's a number of homes that follow that entire route that goes right down into Collingwood Place. And that was my big concern, is that it became almost like a three-block-long driveway and very narrow in places. And of course, the stories that we heard from neighbors, particularly the family who are caring for a child with a disability, a young person with a disability, requiring actually going on the street if they want to go out and venture out into their neighborhood. So just things like that really kind of hit home with me. And so knowing the shape and openness of Dunbar, I felt that that was going to be a good option. So I'm prepared to support this amendment and see what our staff can do to come back in working with the applicant to come up with a kind of a win-win situation so we can get those 30 homes built, mitigate the concerns around going into a cul-de-sac that was probably designed and built, you know, 40, 50, 60 years ago and probably is not well-suited for that kind of back and forth. And then, and then just sort of see where we can get this housing built. So I'll leave it there. Thanks.
Thank you, Councillor Claussen. And before I move on to the next speakers, I'm just going to turn to our city manager, Paul MacRae, who has some comments.
Thanks so much, Chair. I appreciate that. Have reviewed the amendment, and we have identified that there is a potential significant procedural problem with the way the amendment is framed. And I'd ask Grant Murray from the Law Department if he could speak to and kind of elaborate on that, on the issue.
Okay, thank you. Grant, go ahead. Oh, Grant, you're on mute.
That's typically how people prefer me to be, but thank you. The difficulty with this is that section 4.3.3. E of the zoning and development bylaw has delegated to the chief engineer the ability to refuse a development permit if the development would create an unsafe condition. If this cannot be made a safe entrance onto Dunbar, then the city or the chief engineer would or could refuse to approve the development permit. And then we would have an enacted bylaw, a submitted development permit that gets refused as a result of a direction from council, when council has also delegated this authority to determine the safety or lack of safety of a property to the chief engineer. So this could lead to a problem where we have an enacted bylaw, a submitted development permit application, and it gets refused because of a direction that was imposed upon staff by council. So that's our basic concern, is that it appears to conflict with 433E, which authorizes the director of planning to make this decision.
Thank you, Grant. Appreciate that, and thank you, Paul. So duly noted. I'll move, I see a couple of the, oh, Councillor Claussen, do you still have the floor? No. You are done, right? I'll advance Councillor Kirby Young.
Yeah, can I, through you, Chair, to staff, before we start getting into responding to the legal comment and potentially wordsmithing this amendment? Can I ask the city manager to comment on the fact that the former director of planning stated on the record that the access would be off Dunbar?
Thanks, through the chair. Yeah, I can't speak to that. I would take that as a given, councillor, and I don't have the basis for why that claim was made. So I think there is a question for council here in terms of under what conditions you would approve this development. I think what you're hearing from us is the construct that this has been put forward is problematic. But yeah, unfortunately, and I don't know if there's, I would defer to any of the planning staff who may be able to speak to or provide more context for the comment that you're speaking about.
Would anybody else like to weigh in?
Is there any staff that would like to comment, from planning or engineering?
I'm asking the question because, speaking for myself, I supported referring this to public hearing, feeling that any safety issues had been, would be addressed that way. So I'm wondering just about the validity of that part of the process.
Thank you.
City manager, oh, I see. Staff, can you identify yourself as well, just because you're online?
Sure. Hi, I'm Casey Peter, is Assistant Director in the Rezoning Centre. So yes, at the referral, there was a question asked about where the access would be, and the answer provided was that it would be off of Dunbar. Our engineering staff were not available at that referral and did not provide that advice at the time. So the conversation that we've had since referral was that there was the concern noted about the potential safety concerns, which were highlighted at the public hearing.
So a follow-up on that, through the chair, back to the city manager then, is how will council, if I, for example, if I do an amendment to the amendment right now and I change require to explore, how will council have confidence that staff are going to use their best efforts? Because I think we're laboring under one apprehension, and now we're somewhere else.
Thanks. I think it's clear, obviously, from the discussion here, what council's concerns are. And explore, I think we would definitely take that as direction to use best efforts. I think from my perspective, what we're hearing, the only circumstance in which we wouldn't be achieving that outcome is where it's simply not feasible or safe based on the decision of the chief engineer. Otherwise, that would be the outcome that we would be aiming for. So hopefully that provides some comfort.
So we can, I'm reflecting that back then, so we have confidence that that's the outcome that staff are rowing towards?
Based on this discussion, I think we're clear.
And pending any significant considerations that might arise?
Yes, and it would only be where, again, the chief, the city engineer deems that it's unsafe or otherwise just impossible to accomplish.
Okay, thank you. Chair, I'd like to propose, I'd like to propose an amendment to the amendment. If you want to move us to an amendment queue?
Move us to an amendment queue, and I will advance you on there. Oh, and can you submit that in writing?
Yes, I have.
Thank you.
And it is simply to strike the word require and change it to explore. And the clerks can bring that up for the reasons that we've just discussed with respects to different authorities.
Just waiting for that to come up on screen for all of you who are online.
I do, I do note my clock is going.
Just to recap, it is simply to strike.
Require, but fully explore.
To fully explore. Okay, can I get a seconder for this amendment, the amendment seconded by Councillor Meisner? Any discussion on this? I do see Councillor Boyle. I'll advance you, Councillor Boyle.
Thanks. Just hoping to ask a question through you, Chair, to the city manager or legal staff, just to make sure that this language is proper, given that it's a condition to explore. I'm happy to support it if it is, but just want to check.
City manager?
Thanks, Chair. I believe so, and I'll just defer to Grant if he has any other advice.
This time I'm off mute. I think that this satisfactorily deals with the issue that was raised.
Thank you. Thank you, Grant. Thank you, Paul. Any further questions, Councillor Boyle, or comments?
No, I appreciate that. This is the language I would have preferred anyway. And so can certainly support this and really appreciate staff's due diligence in making sure that all of these transportation options are meeting appropriate safety measures for the whole neighborhood, as well as the new future residents of this, of this housing.
Thank you, Councillor Boyle. Seeing no one else on the queue, I will call the question on this, and this is an amendment to the amendment, which is, again, to replace require with fully explore. If we could bring up a voting screen, and please vote on screen, councillors, and please ensure your screen, your videos are on. Clerks, I'll take a vote, a vote in favor. Just waiting for the vote results. And that amendment to the amendment passes unanimously. Thank you, council. We will move back to amendment queue one. And now we're dealing with the amended amendment. I still have Councillor Kirby Young, you still have the floor? Anything further? Okay. Councillor Zhou, I'll advance you.
Okay, I will be brief. So I like to support this amended amendment. So I think we hear the concern from the public speakers, but there are possible mitigation strategy for all those concerns. You know, the entrance of Dunbar is one of the solutions, as well as permitted paths, re-engineering the street or signals. So I'm really, you know, want to leave that to the talent, our engineering team. I'm pretty sure we have a very robust solution to solve all the issues from the public speakers. And also, I think this is a very important rental project, 30 units, and very close to the University of British Columbia. It's a very important project that we need to support. Otherwise, the 30 rental units will never ever be built over there. And also, yeah, I'm also glad to hear from the applicant that they are willing to work with city to explore options for the entrance, for the sidewalk. So those are very positive signs, you know, working with city as well as the communities for the community engagement. So yeah, with that, I'm going to support this amended amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Zhou. And seeing no one else on the queue, I will call the vote on this amendment, this amended amendment. Can we move to a voting screen, please? Ah, yes, I'll take a vote in favor, please. And that amendment passes unanimously. Thank you for that, council. We will move back now to the main queue and the now amended report. We will move back now to the main queue and the now amended report. Counselor Kirby Young, you have the floor.
I'll just say, I really appreciated hearing from all of the neighbors. When people are living in a neighborhood, they know it best, and we have policies that on paper are aspiring to meet sort of the significant housing crunch that we have in the city and deliver and develop new units. And we do have our SRP Secured Rental Policy, which endeavors to expedite the delivery of rental housing across all neighborhoods in the city. But then you come up against unique situations like this one, and this is a very unique street with the fact it has no other access other than the cul-de-sac. And it was really noted, the pictures, I think, from one of the speakers, where it showed literally a house with flames coming out of it next to it. And so it wasn't sort of just, I think, a theoretical fear around what if emergency vehicles can't get in and out? If something happened, something did happen, and that's pretty scary for people. And so I think these are really legitimate concerns and important ones to raise. I'm hopeful here that we have struck the balance between recognizing sort of the physical geography and constraints and still being able to deliver the new housing, but putting some other measures in there. Also, I'm hopeful that staff are hearing some of this discussion because I do think there's potentially other improvements that can be made here with respects to potentially sidewalks or looking at what the parking constraints are. If it's permit-only for residents, for example, you know, one or both sides of the street, it gets quite narrow if you have parking on both sides. So certainly, I think there's a willingness to look at, hopefully, other measures. We do that as a normal course of business when we have developments coming into neighborhoods to consider what's going to be there in terms of pressure on local access and amenities. But I think that this will be great for the Dunbar neighborhood. This is one of the areas where we have seen some of the local services and shops hollowing out because they just simply don't have enough customers. And also for people to be able to work and live in neighborhoods. We have a lot of small businesses that are having trouble in getting and finding staff. And so I think that that's an important consideration as well. But I do really want to appreciate all the neighbors who came out and actively engaged. That is exactly what this process is for, so they can bring the concerns forward to council and that we can look at opportunities to address those. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kirby Young. Counselor Boyle.
Thanks. I am very excited to see this project moving forward. Some of council might know that I grew up very close to there, actually, just a few blocks away, and I am very familiar with these, this double cul-de-sac because I spent many evenings in my childhood years playing kick the can down that cul-de-sac with other kids in the neighborhood until somebody's parent called us all in and we all had to go home for dinner. And the thing that stands out to me most about that was how well that public space was used by neighborhood kids and how much I've seen that neighborhood change since my own years as a kid there, as more and more families have been priced out. So I'm very excited that more families, more students will be able to call this neighborhood home. I hope we see many more projects like this in this area and elsewhere so that, as my colleague said, there are more people in the neighborhood to support the local businesses, more people have easy access to school and to jobs and to what I know is a very beautiful neighborhood. And I hope that the residents, that the kids in this new building similarly get to feel safe playing out on the street into the evening until somebody calls them in for dinner. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Boyle. And I'm going to advance myself just for a couple of last comments. I'll hand the chair to Counselor Bly, who I believe is Deputy Mayor at this time, so if I can do that.
Yep, no problem.
Thank you. Just briefly, I'd like to reflect also thanks to all of the neighbors and residents who came out in person to speak to council, but also phoned in to share their perspective and, as was noted, about the unique nature of this neighborhood and the cul-de-sac. And just to say thank you for doing so, thank you for bringing those concerns to our attention and to staff. But also, I was really heartened to hear from the applicant. The applicant reflected back this evening that they very much heard those considerations, particularly the need to address vehicular and pedestrian safety and access, and that there was support for access off of Dunbar Street. And so I just want to acknowledge that as well. And also noting that some of the considerations that emerged from this public hearing around just generally pedestrian safety, the lack of sidewalks, some of the narrowness of access to the cul-de-sac and parking, I think is something for our engineering team to take away and look at unrelated to this particular rezoning application, given that it was front and center of a number of comments that we heard, including several fires in that specific cul-de-sac and access for first responders. So just noting that. And then finally, specifically to the application itself, I think it's very clear from the conversations we've been having around the table here about the need for more rental housing in the city. This is a fairly modest project with thirty homes. And, but it is located on Arterial. It is near a busy public transit route. It's very close to UBC. And then that's another conversation we've been having is about the importance of having more rental housing for students who are wanting to go to our post-secondary institutions in the city, and also for those who are wanting to have their kids nearby or those who are wanting to downsize as well in their neighborhood. So with those comments, I'm also, I'm prepared to support the application this evening. Oh, and I see Counselor Claussen. I will advance you for your comments.
Thank you, Chair. I'll be very brief, echo the comments of all of my colleagues. I think you've all made extremely strong points, reflecting back not only what we've heard from staff, but the community itself, some really important accounts of life in that community.
Counselor Claussen, you've cut out. If you could just start your sentence again?
Sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm getting some gremlins here. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Very good. Yeah, just, and just further the fact that the applicant came forward with the proposal of working with staff to try and get that Dunbar access. My only other comment I'll add to this is just that I think that this is going to be, foreshadows potentially, as we start to do more of this kind of development in our, in some of these neighborhoods, that we're going to encounter other sort of quirks, if you'd like, of the, of the street grid. And in this particular case, the long sort of pathway into Collingwood Place was really, I think, required us to take a closer look at exactly what we're trying to do here. So I think I'm very comfortable with the fact that we have a solution. I'm sure it won't be the first time where we're looking at a lack of laneway access, closed off street ends, long ways of getting in, and just looking for being flexible and adaptable in the way that we approach these kinds of projects. Because clearly, at the end of the day, we want to make sure that we have more housing. And I, and I really appreciate what Counselor Domnado just said about downsizing because I think this is a neighborhood where a lot of people are afraid that they're not going to be able to stay in their neighborhood, but this provides them an opportunity potentially to downsize as they age out of larger homes. So thanks very much, and I look forward to supporting this application.
Thank you, Counselor Claussen. And seeing no further counselors on the queue, I will call the question on the amended recommendations and the two yellow memos, correct? We have, okay. We'll call the vote. Can you vote on screen, please, council? I'll take a vote, assist in favor, please. Thank you, council, and that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And with that, that concludes our agenda for this evening. Could I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Counselor Meisner, seconded by Counselor Claussen. All in favor? Aye. And that carries. Thank you, everyone, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.